This time we'll ask the Lieutenant Adams, Ambrose Ambula, Salaya, and Mrs. Jonathan Myers to pledge their allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, this time we've called a regular meeting of the Coffee County Board of Education on October 28, 2021, and we have the implication now.
Before we pray, I'd like to read a couple of verses of Scripture. A lot of talk in our culture today about leadership. Probably too much talk. It'd be better if we reminded ourselves that we are first and foremost stewards. First Corinthians 4:2 says, "It is required of stewards that one be found trustworthy." 1 Peter, Chapter 4, says, "As each has received his special gift," and you certainly have received special gifts, "employ it in serving one another as good stewards in the manly and graceful grace of God." Jesus ever said, "Blaze your own trail." Jesus said, "If anyone wishes to come after me, he must deny himself, take up his cross daily, and follow me," which you can do. Lord, tonight, as we look across our nation, we see that boards of education find themselves in difficult situations. And it gives us pause to thank you tonight for our board and for their dedication in serving this county and the students. And, Lord, just setting a good example. And we thank you for them. It's also a time for us to remember, Lord, that while many of us call ourselves leaders, we're above all stewards. Stewards have authority, but then authorities are trusted to them by someone else. Students are accountable to parents and teachers. Teachers and administrators are accountable to our Board of Education. And the board is accountable to the people. And the people, Lord, they're accountable to you. We're all stewards in one way or another. And as stewards, we're entrusted with time, talent, treasure, and in the case of these gathered here tonight, authority. And each of us is accountable for those gifts. So tonight, as we think about our board and our administrators and our teachers and all of those who work with our students and their families, we pray that you might grant them faith and humility and knowledge and discernment and wisdom and, above all, Lord, compassion to lead with a servant's heart, to lead with a steward's heart. And this is my prayer for these five folks who lead us here in Coffee County and offer it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Chip?
Yes.
We got some for you. Oh, Lord, this is Reverend Chip Johnson, by the way.
I get a prize.
Yeah, you get a prize.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Agenda. We need to add a couple hours to the agenda. We're going to need a couple of motions. Local supplement.
I move we add local supplement to... We'll make that number six.
We'll add to a consent agenda?
Yes, sir, a one-time local supplement.
Consent agenda?
Add a one-time local supplement to the consent.
A motion, a lot, all right. All right, then we've got a technology purchase we're going to add to the consent agenda. There's a motion for that.
I move we add the technology purchase to the consent.
That would be a lot of the way. They definitely need to consider. Oh, I'm not sure.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. At this time, I want to reflect on our mission and vision as a school system, our mission of destination graduation for college, career, and life, and our vision of creating a stronger community through an equitable and excellent education for every student. In our work session earlier, I thought our high school staff did a great job of displaying how they're helping build a stronger Coffee County out of Coffee High School. So, governance and leadership, we've got some special recognitions here this evening. And we're going to start off our special recognitions with...
So, we amended the agenda to ever adopt. Let me do that for what you're calling.
Yeah, let's adopt the agenda.
We had a question, we adopted the agenda.
We changed it.
We changed it. Second.
Play.
You call it.
All right. We have recognitions. We've got the special recognition National School Lunch Week. So, Ms. Clayton?
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, I am going to talk about two different groups of employees. We're going to talk about National School Lunch Week, and then we're going to talk about school bus driver appreciation and school bus safety. And I just want to say, thinking about these two groups of employees, good or bad, when we went through the COVID pandemic, we all watched these two departments come together. And it was really heartwarming. And I know, just in talking with them, they've built friendships that they didn't have before. And it was such a team effort, and it still is. Unfortunately, Ms. Lewis couldn't be with us tonight. But I did ask Mr. Buddy Gilliard to come so we could show appreciation to him. But I would like to start with National School Lunch Week that the schools all celebrated this past month. And the theme was Wild About School Lunch. This actually started, as you can see on the screen, in 1962 under President John F. Kennedy. And the purpose of National School Lunch Week is to promote healthy school lunches for children and bring awareness to everyone that these meals impact the children both in and out of the classroom. And that's certainly what we saw when school was closed. Some little facts. We have 70 system-wide feeding service personnel who prepare approximately 10,600 meals per day, 6,200 lunches, and 4,400 breakfast meals. During our summer feeding this past year, they compiled 120,000 meals and delivered them to the students each week. We have 95% of our students who participate in a school lunch program and 76.4% in the breakfast program. And I did want to point out the pictures that I have up there. This is back to the theme of Wild About School Lunch. They dressed up in costume in the schools and had different contests. There were prizes that were given. As I said, they dressed up. And even Mr. Allen up there on the right got involved in it in the cafeteria. And they had coloring contests. And all those prizes to the left of Mr. Allen, School Nutrition purchased those for the schools. And I believe West Green had a business partner that also contributed more than what they got, so they got to do a little bit more. And they even had some guest servers during School Lunch Week. You see Dr. Lee sitting at the top, and we've got Coffee High cheerleaders. And that's Chris Elrod down there. Just wanted to share just a few of the recognitions School Nutrition has received. If you recall, a couple months ago, I think we surprised Ms. Lewis when Dr. Lee gave her the Hunger Hero Project Award. And they received this for their work in keeping our children within the Coffee County community fed during the COVID-19 pandemic. The 2020 Vision, they received this last year. And it's the Farm to School Project through the Georgia Department of Education and Department of Agriculture. By receiving this award, the school district has proven their commitment in serving fresh local foods from agriculture producers in the preparation of school meals. So they use all of fresh produce and vegetables in our lunchroom that are grown by farmers in our area. And now I'd like to talk about our school bus drivers. We have 60 school buses that transport students to and from school. All of our drivers are certified and meet requirements set by federal, state, and local guidelines. They hold safety meetings quarterly with all the drivers, as well as coaches and teachers who hold a CDL. We have four certified technicians who service and inspect all of our buses monthly. And I will say, I know all of the technicians also hold their CDL and really helped us out when we've been short with drivers. They're driving routes as well, as is Mr. Gilliard. On a daily basis, our drivers report to their bus by 5:00 a.m. and start driving routes at 5:45. Most of their days end at 5:00. They do have a break in the middle, but they're still on that bus quite a while. It takes a lot of concentration, responsibility, especially when you're driving and there's 60 to 90 students behind you. And the rain and flooded roads have a lot to do with the responsibility that they have. And being a bus driver is an adventure. Our Transportation Department is to be commended for their hard work during the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic. When our schools closed in the spring of 2020 and our students were learning remotely, the Transportation Department continued to feed our students until the start of the following school year. Our drivers rose to the challenge in making the school bus experience safer as the year began with hand sanitizing stations on their bus, the masks, and organizing seating charts so everyone sat in the same seat every day in case someone became ill they could do contact tracing. These are just a few pictures and talking about the partnership between Transportation and School Nutrition, how they work together. And I will add to the Maintenance Department. They came in and everybody helped make sandwiches and then got together and loaded everything on the buses. It was a true partnership. The Georgia Peanut Commission, who works with the Georgia School Nutrition Association in recognizing school nutrition, highlighted our school system and their efforts in the areas of innovation, volume, and community engagement. Our School Nutrition Department was recognized for the 2020 pandemic feeding where the School Nutrition Department formed a partnership with all school employees, preparing and delivering over 570,000 meals to our students who were at home. One of the quotes that was in the document they were seeing, "Students were so excited to see their teachers, lunchroom staff, and bus drivers, even if it was just to wave and shout hello out the windows." Because of our school system's efforts, there was a much-needed level of normalcy to a stressful time in everyone's life. This is a picture. This was probably six months ago. And talking about partnership with School Nutrition and Transportation, it was the promotion with the Georgia Peanut Commission. Not all superheroes wear capes. And it was because of the partnership between the two departments that they received this award. And you ask about peanut butter. Well, apparently, Smucker's Uncrustables Peanut Butter and Jelly Sandwiches were the favorite meal. So they were given 123 cases of peanut butter to use in their feeding program, a Georgia Dish Town spatula for each School Nutrition member, and they had a pizza party in recognition. But again, it just shows the commitment of these two departments. They did it all for our students. And our bus drivers and our School Nutrition employees, they form partnerships and friendships with our students. And you can see that if you visit the cafeteria, going down the line with the students, the bus drivers and how they speak with students and talk with them and are their friends. I mean, I've heard many stories through the years about that, that they are superheroes, all of them, and we could not function without them. So, Mr. Gilliard, if you'll come up and we can just give you a round of applause for all that you do. And, you know, both Mr. Gilliard and Ms. Lewis, whatever you ask, they jump up and do. And we couldn't have any better folks in these roles. So, thank you so much.
All right. I want to thank Mr. Gilliard once again for all that he does. And Ms. Lewis couldn't be here. She had a debt in the family, so she couldn't be here. And Dr. Banks provides tremendous support for transportation and working with the parents and such. So, thank you to Dr. Banks and all that you do to support the Transportation Department. We've got a great team, a lot of good people. And we're just blessed here in Coffee County. So, thank y'all. And our law enforcement department, in fact, thank you for being here. Appreciate what y'all do. This past week, there was a death in the state of Georgia. And the State Department of Education honored... Dr. David passed away earlier this week. And Dr. Mosley served here in 2011 as the interim superintendent. And he was respected throughout the state. He served, I think, in six different systems as superintendent. It may have been seven systems. But served as an interim here and then he left here and went to Darty and served as superintendent over there. And so, Dr. Mosley had a tremendous influence on especially rural Georgia across our state because he was from down around Bainbridge in Climax, Georgia, and had a lot of relationships with a lot of people throughout the state. And the State Department of Education felt that it would be an honor to name their Office of Rural Education in honor of Dr. Butch Mosley. And when I became superintendent here and go into meetings and be around Dr. Mosley, he was certainly a wealth of knowledge. A lot of folks would call him and get advice. And he offered advice to a lot of people. And so, just wanted to make sure we honored him locally since he worked here in our building and served our school system and interim superintendent here for close to a year, I think around six months. So anyways, we want to honor Dr. Mosley. It certainly be this. Next item on the agenda is principal recognition. This is Principal's Appreciation Month. And so, we wanted to make sure that we honored our principals. And we have a tremendous group of leaders. And I will tell you, and I'm being sincere when I say that we have some top-notch principals in Coffee County. And it's just a pleasure to work with. And they love kids. I had a chance to get out in multiple schools throughout the week. And the children are just well behaved and loving and just a pleasure to visit our schools. And it's because of the leadership of our principals and the leadership they provide. And so, I know we hear a lot on the news. And if you look at the media now, and if you're not out in the buildings and see all the good things happening, and if you just listen to the people who are repeating things that they hear on TV and such as that, then you would think that, wow, things just must be just out of whack all over the place. But then you go visit our schools and you see all of these smiling faces and all of these kids who are happy. And it's like, I don't know. I'm not seeing some of the things that we hear about here in Coffee County. And it's our principals do a great job leading our schools. And we want to make sure we honor them tonight with COVID and all that that's still kind of out there. We didn't want to have too big a crowd here tonight, so we thought we would do as we've been doing in a lot of situations and do a kind of a virtual presentation of our principals. So, we've got Mary Dickers, who is our principal at Ambrose Elementary School and does a tremendous job there. And she is a veteran principal that we're just blessed to have. Tina Sapp, she's one of our newest principals. And I'll tell you all this. When I went and met with the governing council at Brock's and Mary Hayes Elementary School, I met with the governing council to talk about principal. And we talked about who they wanted. There were 10 members on the council. And it was a diverse council made up of community members and teachers and classified staff and business members. And so, all 10 of them said they wanted Tina Sapp. So, that was good to see. And Tina's doing a tremendous job. Amy Viney, she's in her second year, her third year at Eastside Elementary School. Time flies. She's in her third year at Eastside Elementary School, a veteran educator who's doing a tremendous job over there and just doing great work at Eastside. And we're blessed to have Amy at Eastside. Anastasia Carter is our newest principal. And Anastasia's in her first year at Indian Creek Elementary School. And she is a veteran educator and is doing a fantastic job over at Indian Creek. I visited Indian Creek a couple days ago. And just a lot of positive work that's going on over there. We're real excited about the job that Ms. Carter is doing over at Indian Creek Elementary School. Lori Bratcher is at Nichols Elementary School. And she has been at Nichols, I want to say, for eight years as principal. And she has been doing a great job there. And Nichols Elementary School was recognized this past year as a reward school. So, Lori Bratcher at Nichols Elementary School. Lee Mobley at Satilla Elementary School. Lee is doing a fantastic job at Satilla. He is so people-centered and student-centered and does a fantastic job with our students there at Satilla Elementary School. And he's probably one of our senior principals at this point, him and Mary and Sherry. So, Lee is very experienced and does a great job at Satilla. And you see his artwork all over the county. So, he is also an artist that does tremendous work. But we're just blessed to have Lee. Alan Chancy, I want to say he's in his third or fourth year at West Green. And he's doing a tremendous job at West Green and does a good job leading those staff members and boys and girls out at West Green Elementary School. I was just out there yesterday and saw a lot of good things happening. And we're real excited about what Alan brings at West Green Elementary School. Wendy Jowers is at Westside Elementary School. She has been principal there, I want to say, going on nine years, maybe. Right when we became the charter system, she became principal. So, she's close to nine, maybe eight. But she does an excellent job at Westside Elementary School. Brings a wealth of knowledge with curriculum, instruction, reading, and early literacy. And she's doing a really good job there at Westside and runs a great school. And you can count on Ms. Jowers to run a tight ship. And she does a good job. We're blessed to have her. Ms. Sherry Berry, who's our principal at Coffee Middle School. Ms. Sherry Berry hits her 11th year at Coffee Middle School. And I know because me and her started, this is my 11th year superintendent. This is her 11th year as principal there at Coffee Middle School. And she's done a tremendous job. She inherited that school. I can remember me and her walking the halls because I was new here, she was new there. And so, we walked the halls. And we both agreed that they needed to get some things on the walls, need to brighten it up, make it look more like a school on the interior. And she has transformed the interior of the middle school. If you go visit, it's just a very positive place with a lot of student artwork and student work that's displayed, different items on the walls. She put up the Trojan heads in the main corridors. And has just done a tremendous job with the climate there at Coffee Middle School. And I tell you, every time I go out there, it's just so orderly and the students are so well behaved. And you'd never know that there's 1,300, 1,400, 1,500 students there on any given day. So, she does a great job. And let me add to that. She was the Georgia Middle School Principal of the Year 2018, 2019. So, she was the Georgia Principal of the Year. Abe Morris is at George Washington Carver Freshman Campus. He has done a tremendous job there with his student-centered approach to managing the student body and building a team atmosphere there with the students. And I can tell you that ninth graders love the Ninth Grade Academy. And I've had two children go through there at one time or another, my personal children. And they had positive experiences at the Ninth Grade Academy. And he's done a great job leading that school and transforming and doing good work there. And when I say transform, he was involved with the evolution of the academies of Coffee. They were the first of the schools, him having ninth graders, to start the academy model. And he had to implement that work there with the ninth graders in the academy. Van Allen is one of our newest principals at Coffee High School. He is in his first year, but he's a veteran in Coffee County. He's been in our school system many years. He's been seven years as an assistant principal. So, he was ready and weathered and ready to go to take over there as principal. And so, he brings a lot of experience in school business. And we're just excited about the work that Van's doing at Coffee High School. Pam Smith at Wiregrass Regional College and Career Academy. Pam brought a real unique skill set to the Career Academy. She was a high school guidance counselor earlier in her career. So, she had vast knowledge of guiding students through the high school experience and scheduling and courses and all of that. And so, she's brought that experience with her into this role as the Wiregrass Regional College and Career Academy principal or CEO. And they actually lead the state in diploma option B students. Now, what diploma option B students is, students can take, instead of having to take four maths, they can take two maths. Instead of having to take four Englishes, they can take two Englishes. Instead of four sciences, they can take two sciences. Instead of four social, they can take two social. And then they have to do, complete two TCCs. That's Technical College Certificates. So, they have to do two Technical College Certificate programs and complete them or the coursework towards an associate's degree that's out towards college. And if they complete that coursework, we can give them a diploma, a high school diploma. So, she actually leads the state in diploma option B students in the state of Georgia. So, she's done a tremendous job taking outside the box and building a really successful program. We've got the most students at the Career Academy we've ever had. So, Pam Smith. Tanya LaSueur at Coffee County Educational Academy. Ms. LaSueur has been there now for five or six years. And she has done a tremendous job. And we are blessed to have Ms. LaSueur and her experience and the things that she brings in the Alternative Education Program. She has helped us transform the alternative program and grow the alternative program in a very positive way. We have some students who just need something different. We have some students that have some challenges that they need to learn to deal with. And they need some time in another setting, in kind of a clinical setting, something that fits their needs at that time. And Ms. LaSueur does a great job working with some of our most challenging students. And she brings a very student-centered approach to it, but a very, very orderly approach to it and does a great job with those students there. And we're just real excited to have Ms. LaSueur doing what she's doing at the Alternative Education Academy and just real pleased with what's going on with her. So, those are our principals. And we wanted to make sure that we recognize Principal Appreciation Month of October and give our principals a hand. If y'all would, let's give them a round of applause. Yeah, she's going to do the system update. Yeah. At this point, we'll have Ms. Faith delivering our system update.
Good evening, everyone. We are here this afternoon just to provide a couple of slides for you regarding our system update. We've had some data that came in about our student performance that we're excited about. And we're going to share that with you this afternoon. First slide is about our graduation rate from last year. We're excited. Mr. Allen came up early and shared about the high school. But we're excited to say that Coffee High School, as well as Wiregrass, have both exceeded our state average. Coffee High School has a graduation rate of 91.4; Wiregrass, 95.16; and as a district, 88.6. And it would seem that it would just be an average, but it's not. There are other different numbers that have to be calculated in that. But we still are excited that in spite of the pandemic and all the challenges that we faced last year, our school system still was able to shine and be our state average. faced last year, our school system still was able to shine and beat our state average of 83.7. And so we're excited about the great things that's going on with our graduates.
Let's give our system, our students, and all of our staff a round of applause for exceeding state average.
Exactly. Dr. Lee, our state average did drop just 1.7 from what it was the previous year, but we still were excited to be 4.96 points above the state average. So we're excited about that. And our next slide. We wanted to celebrate our SAT scores this year. We, for our five-year train, had really good scores, but this year has turned out to be one of our highest years with a score of, a total mean score of 10.24. So we definitely understand that that is a pre-K-12 effort. It's not just a high school experience, but it's the culmination of all of those grade levels from pre-K through 12, of all the educators, schools, principals, teachers, everybody putting all those hard work to be able to make sure that our students are exceeded in every area. So we're excited to celebrate our class of 2020 and 2021 that had the high score of 20, um, 10.24 as SAT. And that is it for this afternoon? That's it? Yes, sir?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Faith. Yes, sir. I would ask the board that we amend the agenda. Bushnell property, it's on, it's on the agenda there and it is on the agenda on that. Yeah, it's on mine too. It's on the agenda.
Yeah.
All right. All right. The consent agenda, we've got minutes from our previous monthly meeting. We've got monthly financials, September 2021. And you all reviewed those financials in our work session earlier this evening. And we are in a strong financial position. And I want to thank all of our staff and our leadership for being good stewards of public dollars. And I think that's the sign of where we're at fiscally right now. It's an indication that our people are really serious about making sure they're, they're doing the right thing. Nichols property, we're going to approve the high bid for the Nichols property, 0.38 acres, by approving this this evening. Bushnell property, we discussed that in our work session. And this would, the board would approve a quick claim deed for Bushnell Chapel Church property that was actually needed to them originally back in 1974, '75. And this would just remove this reverter clause that was in there. And restroom epoxy floor proposals, we opened those bids earlier today. We presented them to the board during our work session. This will be paid for using CARES II funds, and the low bid was Harper Construction. And then we've added to the consent agenda, technology purchase, which the board will approve on the consent agenda tonight. And then we will also approve a one-time local supplement. At the September Board of Education meeting, our local board approved the FY21 financial statements, which indicate we are in a healthy financial position. I would like to thank all of our teachers, staff, and administration for all that they do. Our faculty and staff have done an exemplary job focusing on our mission of destination graduation for college, career, and life under some of the most challenging circumstances in our history. With the U.S. Department of Education's issuance of funds under the CARES and American Rescue Plan, our school system is able to enhance instructional services, modify and update facility needs. At this time, I am asking the board to approve a one-time local supplement of $1,000 for every employee of the school district to be paid out of our general fund. This will be a one-time supplement that will be distributed to all employees prior to the Christmas prayer. Our employees are our greatest resource, and we thank each of them for remaining committed to our boys and girls in the Coffee County schools. Any motion for proof of consent agenda?
We accept the amended consent agenda.
Question was made. Are they? Any comments from anybody on the issue? I have no need for executive session. No, sir. You were presented with a personnel list. I would ask you to approve the personnel list as presented. Wait. Press for failure. Public comments?
Just keep the meeting going, everybody.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Everybody good? Meeting adjourned. All right. Any public comments? Wait, Ms. Faith, do you have something?
Just, I was going to remind everybody tomorrow night to pink out at the ballgame, the breast cancer awareness and the Ginnie B. Jones musical, Saturday night, Drama Club.
Great. Yes, the ballgame tomorrow night and pink out at the ballgame. Be a big crowd out for Warner Robins. But then also thank you for pointing out the Ginnie B. Jones performance in the Performing Arts Center Saturday night. I realize there is a football game going on that day with Georgia beating Florida, but but there will be a beautiful performance at the Performing Arts Center that evening at 7:00 for our high school drama. And then the, as far as, is board member and superintendent comments? Were there any comments from our board members? Any comments?
I'd like to say a couple of things. Based on the presentation that the high school gave, I follow them on social media. They, they're cheerleading all the time for what's going on out there. And to thank our business, education, healthcare, and community leaders for putting the time and effort in to visit with our children, to make presentations to them. You know, I'm wondering when we're going to get to use the Performing Arts facility, but it's been perfect for all of that. Everybody can spread out a little bit, and it's, it's a beautiful facility. And I appreciate everyone's time and effort on that. And I also want to say, you know, just how grateful I am, I'm sure I can speak to the board as well, and everyone's efforts to get us back to in-person learning. I sit on the, I'm the president of GSBA, and I try to two-mile horn. But my message to our membership this year, it was that that's what we're here to do. It's our core business, is to do in-person learning. I know we tried real hard with the virtual. It may have worked for a few, but it didn't work for the folks that really need the in-person learning. I appreciate everyone's help in getting us back to that.
Yes, sir.
And our, and our parents were greatly involved in that. So appreciate them supporting us to get back in person.
Any other? I want to thank our board for your leadership and your commitment to Coffee County and helping us work to try to reach our mission and vision. And all of our staff, we've really had a great year thus far, and we'll continue on. Thanksgiving's right around the corner, so everybody stay safe. We need to continue to wash our hands and do those things that we know, try to keep the numbers of the COVID cases down. But it all is really kind of leveled off, it appears at this point, and the number of cases seem to be going down. So just good things happening in our school system. So if there's nothing else. All of mine is clear. Thank you.